Usually Courtney, when they start changing the locks.
Okay, everybody?
Let's do it.
Call the order. Good evening, I'd like to call the order, City Council Special Meeting, of the City of Satellite Beach, October 3rd, 2018, approximately 6:30 PM. This is for a public hearing. We will open up a public hearing for Agenda Item 2, Discuss/ Take Action on the Florida Department Environmental Protection Notice of Grant Application for the Recreation Grant Development Assistant Program.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. And City Council members. So this is the annual application process for the Firdap grant. This is how we've funded a lot of our recreation facilities in the city. We are looking to apply, you can apply for up to two at a time, so we're gonna do that this time. This one, this item that we're talking about now is for De Soto Park. It's a $50,000 non-matching grant, so the city doesn't have to put anything up for it. They have had grant cycles in the past several years that does not end up getting funded at all, so they will roll the grants over to the next cycle. And of the years that they have funded them, they've only done the small 50,000 or less projects. None of the big projects have been funded, so. So this one is for improvements to De Soto Park. What we're looking to add is a new ADA kayak and canoe launch, some security lighting, some picnic areas, and renovate and update the existing backrooms that are connected to the baseball grandstand, and add some playground elements to the small playground that's there now between the baseball field and the tennis courts. It's kind of like a rock wall, but that's the only thing that's there, so.
Thank you, questions?
I'll make a motion to authorize the Recreation Department to submit the Florida Recreation Development Assistance Program Grant Application requesting funding in the amount of $50,000 with no city match.
Thank you, second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Osmer. At this time, any further comment from council? Hearing none, open up for public comment on Agenda Item 2. Hearing none, bring it back to council, further council comments? Good job.
Do we need to specify that city manager can sign the?
I'll amend it so the city manager can sign the grant application package.
Amen, my second.
Thank you. Hold on.
Councilman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilman Breimer?
Yes.
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Montanaro?
Yes.
Mayor Catina?
Yes, motion passes. Any further business on this Agenda Item or our special meeting? Hearing none, close the meeting, and we will be back in.
In on.
Good evening, everyone, I'd like to call the order, a special meeting of the City Council of Satellite Beach, October 3rd, 2018, approximately 6:40 PM. This is for a public hearing. I'll open that public hearing section for Discuss/ Take Action on the Florida Department of Environmental Protection Notice of Grant Application for the Florida Recreational Development Assistance Program Grant.
Thanks again. Okay, so this is the second of the applications that we're looking to, of grants that we're looking to apply for. It is also a $50,000 non-matching grant. This is for improvements out of the sports park, and it's going to include expanding the existing dog park, which we currently have in our capital improvement plan, so it'll actually, if we get the grant, will save us some money there. It'll put a small shade, sail shade, up in the dog park, which the users there have been requesting for a couple of years now. It will connect the existing sidewalk that surrounds the sports park to the main entrance to the skate park by paving the dirt path that's currently there. We will install some security lighting between the parking lot and the skate park, and between the skate park and the dog park, because at night when the big lights go off, it's really, really, really dark for any staff that's out there walking up. In addition, it'll renovate the tot bike trail, which is over between the football and soccer field. That used to be real cute for kids, you know, and their little bicycles and stuff, and so. We're gonna renovate that as well, and fix up the, one of the existing picnic areas.
Thank you very much. Motion?
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the Recreation Department to submit a Florida Recreation Development Assistance Program Grant Application requesting funding in the amount of $50,000 for improvements to the Satellite Beach Sports and Recreation Park, and allow the city manager to sign the grant application package. Two breaths, I'll take two breaths.
Thank you, I have a motion by Councilman Gibson, second by Councilman Osmer. Open up for public comment, any discussion further from council?
I just want to say, I have a neighbor who's in a wheelchair, and she had talked about that little dirt section with her kid, and she has a small child, so this is, she'll be, I'd be very happy to tell her that this is gonna be changed, because she can't take her kid to the.
We were just discussing that.
Yeah, yeah, so that's good. Good talk.
Perfect. At this time, open up for public comment for Agenda Item 2. Hearing none, back to council, any further council? One question real quick. So you were saying there's a problem that when you turn the lights off at the skate park, if the dog park is still open?
No. It's not, but there's still, the staff is closing down the skate park, and when those lights get turned off, then the walk from the.
Peace.
The parks of the park.
I was just saying, if the other way around, just leave both lights on.
Yeah, no, when the lights go out over there, it's like.
Dark. Thank you, any further? Lenore?
Councilman Breimer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Montanaro?
Yes.
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Councilman Gibson?
Yes.
Mayor Catina?
Yes, motion passes. Any further business on this public hearing? Hearing none, for a public hearing. We'll start our next workshop meeting, October 3rd, 2018, approximately 6:50 PM. And the reason for this workshop is to interview board applicants. So the process here, we'll just call you up, the two board applicants, it's very painless, and if you would, just come up, I think the last mic facing the audience, the live mic that people can hear better from, and just tell us your name, a little bit about yourself, and we'll make this go pretty quick. So Jane, if you'd like to be the first to start, please come up.
Good evening, City Council. I'm Jane Van Cleve, and I live on Cherry Drive here in Satellite Beach. I bought a newish home here in April, moved in in May, and I came from the Mount Dora area, but I've lived in Brevard, this will be my third time. A few years ago in Indian Atlantic, and about seven years ago off of Lake Washington Road. Now that I'm back, I'm totally retired, I have the time to give to community, and that's what I am looking forward to doing, should you accept my application. I don't know if you were given a copy of a letter from a former colleague. I sat on many committees, many boards, from transportation to budget committees, and then finally, in my former industry of 30 years, I was President of the Florida Nursery and Growers Association. And since that time, my career ended in 2008. I was asked to retire by what was my then-husband, and we traveled the world and had fun for about 10 years, and then he unfortunately passed away last year. So I would rather do something, and albeit accepted, I'd love to get involved with the community. I think I could be an asset to you.
Thank you very much. Ask a couple of questions. You listed beautification board as number one, is that your preference to it? I mean, there's.
Not necessarily. I have a broad skill set, and I think I could be beneficial on perhaps more than one board. Beautification is kind of a bailiwick. I lived in Mount Dora for 25 years, I don't know if you're familiar in that part of the state. It's a lovely New England flavor community, and was very involved with that community, from beautification to hospice to many other areas. Another interest I have is the Fire and Police Pension Fund, as well as sustainability.
Yes, good, I know there's some openings, I believe there's an opening on the Fire and Police Pension, so that's why I asked you the question.
Sure.
Let me open, any other questions from members here?
I don't have any.
Mark?
The only thing, thank you for volunteering.
You're welcome.
As the council liaison to the beautification board, I'm sure they would be thrilled to have you on board.
Well, that's wonderful news.
Because you bring so much to the table. But I also think that she would be able to serve on two boards if we chose to do something like that with the pension board, because they're not.
Let's see where we go.
So I just wanted to thank you for volunteering.
You're very welcome.
Mindy, anything?
I was just gonna say, you would be okay with serving on, you said, two? And would beautification, if you had to pick between beautification and the pension board, which one do you think you'd pick?
I think I'd have to pick beautification first. I think there's a lot of opportunity with reinvigorating a vibrant community here.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
So the process is, it's an Agenda Item, it's towards the end, you're more than welcome to stay through our council meeting. If not, the city clerk will notify you. Thank you.
All right.
Appreciate it. Good evening, thank you.
Thank you. I'm John Guttmacher. I've applied for the Recreation Board, I've been watching for an opening on the Recreation Board for years. I call up recreation and make suggestions, some of which are good and some of which probably aren't. You know, I'm very interested in this aspect of local government. I think I can contribute a lot to it. I have a lot of experience in pretty much everything, including being committee chairman for the Florida Bar, a few of their committees, and pretty much doing everything. Right now, I'm retired from the practice of law, but very active as an author and as a publisher.
Thank you very, very much for applying. Questions?
I have none.
No.
Thank you, like I said before, it's an Agenda Item, back in the packet. You're more than welcome to stay, if not, Lenore will get ahold of you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Any further business?
Yes, sir.
Okay, this time, we'll adjourn for the regular council meeting. Good evening, everyone, I'd like to call the order, a regular meeting of the City Council of Satellite Beach, October 3rd, 2018, 7:00 PM. Please join me in a moment of silence in the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America, and to the republic for its sustenance, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. At this time, I would like to make a proclamation recognizing October as National Breast Cancer Awareness Month.
If I go down, you got it. So before I get going, I just want to say this on the proclamation. We have a pretty amazing staff here, and they have done an amazing job of raising funds. Breast cancer awareness, our department, our staff here has raised a lot of money, worked very hard. This is not their job to do, they do it on off time, and they put together in a total day. Julie has done incredible with it, and her department has the shirts and so forth for sale, and all the money goes to breast cancer, and Julie, $63,000, $63,000 in their relief for life. Incredible job, gentlemen, and you guys have been doing it for a number of years. Thank you very much, and I'll read this proclamation. This is an official proclamation of the City of Satellite Beach, Florida. Whereas breast cancer is one of the most common cancers diagnosed in the United States. More than 200,000 women, one out of every eight women, will be diagnosed with breast cancer this year. And whereas, understanding the risk factors associated with the illness is essential to prevention. Older women and those with a personal or family history of breast cancer are at greater risk to develop the illness. And whereas, breast cancer is an unpredictable disease with no exact cause. However, learning more about the substance diagnosis and getting mammogram screens can help early detection, which is critical to prevention. And whereas, the American Cancer Society raises money for educational programs, and the Susan G. Komen Foundation raises money for research and early detection. And whereas, coming together as a community to support mothers, daughters, sisters, aunts, and all others who have been impacted, we can all strive to inspire and strengthen the cause through education and research to find a cure, ensuring a future free from this illness. And whereas, the pink ribbon is the most prominent symbol of breast cancer awareness. In most countries, the month of October is National Breast Cancer Awareness Month. The fight for a cure is never-ending, a challenge that will one day save the lives of many people. Therefore, I, Frankie Catino, Mayor of the City of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, hereby proclaim October 28th as National Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And Julie, thank you for everything, and I know you want to say something, so please.
Thank you. I'm taking this proclamation on behalf of a cancer survivor who's holding a fundraising event the end of this month, a little closer to the end, on October 20th at Galaxy's Gateway, from 6:30 to 9:30. She's gonna have raffles, and she would have loved to have been here today, but unfortunately doing some testing, so I'll send you the link, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Julie. Gentlemen, ladies, thank you very much for your constant help in our city, and chief to you and the staff, thank you.
Thank you for all you do.
Thanks, guys, thanks, appreciate it.
Okay. Moving on to Agenda Item 4, this is citizens' comments for non-A agenda items. I will take citizens of the City of Satellite Beach first.
Good afternoon, Mayor, council members. I'm gonna have some further comments for you later. My name's Dan, I live in Carriage Park. But I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank you guys for all moving forward with further testing on the groundwater in the city. That's a big, important step, and it's a great opportunity to learn more about the contamination in our area. So I just wanted to recognize that and thank you all.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Floor is still open for citizens? Hearing no further from citizens, I'll take non-citizens on non-agenda items. Thank you, hearing none, bring it back to the council. City council comments? With council permission, I'd just like to start real quick here, because I will not allow my city manager to read this, but I'm going to. So I think we have a really amazing city manager, and I think a lot of other people do. She's been nominated by the Melbourne Regional Chamber of Commerce, Commerce, excuse me, for the Collective Impact Award for Women on the Rise, and the ceremony will be held October 16th at the Crown Plaza. So to my city manager, great job, thank you very much. Okay. No, I mean, Mindy?
No, you're on my fourth one in your room.
Yes, that's okay.
Do you need to tell us something?
No, no, not yet.
Comments, oh, okay. Really not much to say, did the, went to the RAB meeting last night, so it's kind of a residential meeting with the military base, and got to hear a little bit about what they're doing with the PFAs and their cleanup efforts, and they meet three times a year. Bear with me, I have asthma and I can't breathe right now, so if I pass out, I know at least the fire guys are out there. I'm good. So, thank you. You know what, I'm just gonna end the comments now, because, but, thank you, yeah, I just went to that meeting.
On the 25th, Courtney and I met with Senator Debbie Mayfield, along with some elected officials from some of the other cities in the area, and talked to her about our needs in Tallahassee and some of the things that are priorities for our cities. So had a great meeting with her, she's always been very receptive to, you know, talking with us, and, you know, she makes time for us. On Friday the 28th, I went to a retirement party for Sean Wallach, who is a retired captain at Patrick Air Force Base. He was also the Patrick Air Force Base liaison to the Space Coast League of Cities. And Sean's done a great job in that position for the last three years that I've been on the executive committee. He comes to all our meetings, he lets us know what's going on at Patrick Air Force Base, at Cape Penaveral with launches, and it was a pleasure to be able to go and partake in that. And today, Stu Glass and I from Indian Atlantic, and Mark Ryan from Indian Harbor Beach, and Mike Noah from Cocoa Beach met with Representative Thad Altman. Had a great discussion with him this morning too, about some of the same things that Courtney and I talked to Debbie Mayfield about. You know, once again, Thad's been around here for a long time, he understands the dynamics of our beach communities and some of the priorities that we look at, and it was a good meeting, so that's it.
Thank you. Mark, nothing?
Nothing.
One other thing I'd like to say, for those who went to Satellite Homecoming, for those that didn't, Homecoming is Friday night, so go out there to turn out for, Homecoming game is Friday night at Satellite, so. Thank you. Please go to turn out the last time for their first game, which was kind of a preseason, was really, really nice. I mean, it was a really good turnout, so. All right, moving on to city attorney's report.
I don't have anything.
Okay, thank you. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor. On Sunday, October 14th, the Lions Club and Police Athletic League Annual Pancake Breakfast will be held from 8:00 to noon in the City Hall breezeway, right out here. This is all-you-can-eat breakfast for $5, and tickets are available at the Recreation Department, at the teen zone, or any Lions Club member, or you can just show up and pay when you get here. I finally found that out, like, two years ago, and it was a lot easier for me. But it's definitely an event you don't want to miss. For informational items, as reported at the September 5th, 2018 meeting, City Council meeting, the Fire Department applied for a $3,500 grant from Surfing, Evolution, and Preservation Foundation, and the city has received these grant funds, and they'll be used to purchase safety gear for water rescue. And I've attached that notice in my, in my report. The Fire Department has also received a $47,730 grant from the Florida Firefighter Assistance Program to purchase five sets of personal protective equipment and five self-contained breathing apparatus devices. Although the award amount is less than the original grant request, these are non-matching funds, so that allows us to free up $47,730 from our capital improvements program to apply to something else. I received a notice from Brevard County regarding the levying of the Brevard County Solid Waste Charges for fiscal year 1819, and that attachment is in your, is in my report. I also wanted to let you know that I did attend the Patrick Air Force Base Restoration Advisory Board Committee, or Board meeting, last night. This is a board that Patrick Air Force Base puts together to have community input into their remediation, their site remediation for contaminated sites across the base. The meeting, we already have, John Fergus is already on that board, he's actually a founding member of that board. I did attend that, and Nick Seanzon, our environmental coordinator, we both were appointed to that board last night. It was a very interesting presentation, incredible amount of detail that they get into, which is great, because normally when we coordinate with the, with the base, we get the high level, you know, here's the contaminated sites that we're working on and so on, and this is literally giving us test results and things like that, so it's very, very detailed information. At the request of a member of Matt White, the Sustainability Board discussed and approved sending a statement of support to you, City Council, regarding how the recent groundwater issues are being handled, and the following is the statement they are sending to you. Quote, "The Sustainability Board applauds the exemplary proactive, inclusive approach the leadership of our great city has taken to learn the scope of facts surrounding the recently learned groundwater issue. The Sustainability Board is honored to serve our exceptional city in efforts to support and drive policy for the benefit of future generations," unquote. So that was a nice support letter, or a support statement, and with that, I am done.
Thank you very much. Any questions for the city manager? Okay, thank you very much. At this time, question to the audience, how many are here for Agenda Item 10? Since it's quite a ways back in the Agenda Packet. So Agenda Item 10 is concerning our groundwater testing. So I'll just kind of show our hands of how many people are here for that. Okay, with council permission? Thank you. At this time, I'm gonna move to Agenda Item 10, and which is Discuss/ Take Action on Approval of Groundwater Testing Plan and Budget Request.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a revised draft proposal for you on your table. I'm assuming we printed out additional ones. This is because we solicited, or I solicited, input from the residents that have been in discussions with me, what they wanted to test for, and then also, we have been coordinating with the county quite a bit. So at the August 5th community meeting that was held here at Civic Center, where we produced the results of the last PFAS and PFOA, we told the community that we would be doing the next round of testing for contaminants, and we would take our time doing that, because we had to do this in a systematic and more scientific way, and then also solicit input from residents on what they wanted to see tested. So that is what we've done, we've been working with the county, they, we are under, we're, we're, if you approve this, we will be operating under the county's contract with Applied Ecology, and the county will be paying that invoice and then sending that to us. This Applied Ecology is Claudia Listopad, we've worked with her on several projects in stormwater treatment, and also, this is the same consultant firm that Indian Harbor Beach has just contracted with to do their testing. So that provides kind of a nice continuity between the county, the city, and Indian Harbor Beach. We provided testing, or recommending, we're recommending testing six irrigation wells and the public shower. I'm getting a lot of questions on whether people can take the shower, or, you know, rinse off at Grant Avenue. And then also, three groundwater wells that we have already dug. These are shallow wells, these are probably gonna be the more telling tests that we will be doing, so we're limiting the more complicated tests, like, for things like strontium and strontium and all that. I'm not a scientist, but she's recommending to limit those tests to these shallow wells, because if you're looking for groundwater or soil pollution, you're gonna want to get as close to the, to the ground as possible. And our groundwater wells are much closer than the irrigation wells, which are, most irrigation wells in the city are about 230 feet deep. We also would be providing a trip field blank, which means that we, just like the last time, we submitted a blank to the lab, and they test it, and then we can ensure that the lab is completing the test correctly, because we know it's gonna come back as a non-detect. So that, that total cost is $14,420. I know there's some concern with finances, however, I think there's a, we're getting so many questions about, you know, this issue, that we think it's important that we coordinate with the county, complete the testing, and give our. testing and give our residents that information and hopefully a surety, um, if that's the case, that, that we're, that we're gonna be safe there. So that's the staff recommendation. Um, we're requesting your approval as well as the budget appropriation, up to 15,000 in case we have some type of, of change.
Courtney, timeframe, um, starting and finishing? Um, do we know that yet?
It usually takes approximately a month to get the report back. Um, the, the unfortunate thing, especially with the PFOS and PFOAs, everybody's testing it and there's very limited labs that are doing it, so that's the holdup usually. Um, and they have to, some of these tests are pretty specialized and they have to be sent out, um, quite, quite far actually, um, to get done. So it'll be about a month. I don't wanna give anybody unrealistic expectations. I know the last testing round, we had a lot of, um, interest of, you know, are they back yet? Are they back yet, especially from the news? So I'm gonna tell the news. It's gonna take a month at least. Um, so, uh, it'll, you know, and if it takes a little longer than that, it takes a little longer than that. We've, we're, you know, um, we just need to be cognizant that we're not the only people that are requesting these tests.
Okay, great, thank you. Further questions from council?
This was something that was brought up this morning with Mark Ryan. They're still waiting on the results and it's been a while, so, you know, um, he's basically hearing the same thing that you're saying and they're already in that situation. So, um, we would love to be able to say we're gonna have it in a month, but it may not be a month, um, just based on the fact that there are multiple cities now starting to test for this stuff. And Mike Miller was there from Cocoa Beach and they're drilling a bunch of new wells too. So there's a lot more, um, activity, um, that these labs are having to tend to right now, so. I'm glad that we're doing this. I, I know that we talked about this right in the beginning and we were supportive of all this and I'm, I'm all for spending this money to make sure that we know what's going on.
Further comment?
Yes.
I got one too.
I know, I was just saying, no, yes, I agree with him.
Okay. Um, Mark?
Um, as you guys know, and I'll repeat myself again, the conversation I had with Courtney, Courtney remembers, was I was supportive of the first round of testings. Um, and I was, as you know, with the provision that if we found something, whatever something is, it would be moved on to the next level. In other words, there'd be a plan. Um, I, I don't support just more ground testing because where are we gonna go with this? We have not had any, um, consultations with EPA or anybody else. I, from what I know, the drinking water's safe. They've been told not to drink the groundwater and there's no cancer cluster. I mean, I think if more comes out, this would be appropriate down the road to do, but at this point in time, I don't see us to spend on this kind of money. I just can't support it just because I don't see where we're going with this. We're gonna have more tests and then what are we gonna do? By the way, everybody around us is testing. So I think we could sit back for a while, let some tests be run and then, uh, we can make our decision to move forward at that point in time. Right now, I don't think it's appropriate.
Thank you.
I have something to that, just real quick. I just wanna say, I mean, I don't know that what you're hearing from the community, but where I'm coming from is I'm being asked by people in the community over and I feel like we represent the community and I feel like it's very important that we do what they're asking us to do. And I agree that the $15,000 is a lot of money. We're not really rolling in the dough right now, but, um, sometimes you just, you make choices because this is what you're being told is what they want. So that's where I'm coming from and I agree. I think it's a good thing to do and we're gonna vote yes for.
Let me ask a couple of questions, because depending on who you run into, you get different answers.
Okay.
I hate to spend the money, but I also wanna get the answers. Um, I can tell you that it's pretty divided out there. I've had numerous calls. I can't tell you how many people have said, numerous, don't spend the money. I would say it'd be overwhelming number of people that have come to me. People that haven't talked to me in a long time. I went for a walk yesterday, which I thought I was gonna get my 45 minutes in and I can assure you, it didn't happen. Over the hour that I was out, I walked about 10 minutes and got stopped five times. And four people were like, you know, what's going on? One lady was very interested, thought we need to find out more information. So Mike, I'm not concerned, but what, we're spending another 15 grand. Are we testing for what we need to in this 15 grand? Because what I don't wanna do is come back three weeks later and go, oh, we should've tested this, here's another 10, another 10.
Yep.
At some point, the information that we receive has to be disseminated.
Well, we're testing for, um, I guess it wasn't...
Well, I, I, yes, what I'm saying is, you and I went over, right. You and I went over that. So it's like a page of...
It's incredibly comprehensive.
It, it's a lot of stuff. I just wanna make sure that when we get it, that somebody looks at this from a scientific standpoint, okay? Because I've gone on, I've done a lot of reading and people don't believe the EPA, but they don't believe this or that. We're gonna have to believe somebody in this process or we're gonna be here for years going through it.
Yeah.
I lived here all my life. I want a safe community. I live here. My family lives here. And I also wanna make sure though, that we get the information and when it's done, whatever that done means, that we can move on. You know, that we do what we need to do to assure everybody it's safe. So you feel comfortable? I mean, I read this thing, there's more chemicals I can't even pronounce, 90% of them. So is this a pretty comprehen, I mean, it looks pretty comprehensive when there's 129 items on here.
Yeah, it's incredibly comprehensive. And we added, you know, the PFOS, PFOA, um, and we added some things that were not on here that's in the scope. Um, and then we also solicited input from the, from the residents that have been reading with us on it. Um, so I'm assuming that it has everything in there. You know, we probably will have people that are, you know, oh, you missed this and, you know, things like that. But I think unless we have some major, you know, um, test result come back that's, that's showing some pretty severe, you know, contamination, then, um, I think at some point we could say, look, you know, we've, we've investigated as much as we can. Um, and that, you know, rabbit holes aren't something we wanna go down. This is the first blush of testing, you know, so if it comes back without anything. Um, the first test, we focused on PFOS and PFOA and that was because of the Department of Defense report. Um, but this is coming out of the concerns that, you know, there's other stuff and that they wanna make sure that it's not there.
Okay. Very good. Um, okay. Um, at this time, I will open up for public comments and again, how I will run public comment. It must be about the groundwater, okay? Because that's what this agenda item is. This is groundwater. If it's, you're concerned about drinking water, that needs to be another issue at another time because this agenda item is groundwater. So we kinda gotta stick to a plan. So I'll open it up for citizens that live in the boundary of Satellite Beach. So the mics open for citizens of Satellite Beach.
Back again, this is Dan in Carriage Park. So I wanted to go over a couple of things with you about the, uh, the groundwater testing agenda. Um, I'll start with a, a positive note. This is very good, as I said before, that I'm, I'm very pleased to see additional testing. Um, one thing I wanna point out is the 129, uh, chemical list. That's the EPA prefer, uh, priority pollutants list, correct?
Yes, that's what it says.
Okay, and that doesn't include all of the chemicals that each method can test for? I mean, there's a, there's a few on the list that, uh, they aren't included in the prefer, uh, the priority pollutant list. I, I'm assuming that's because of budget constraints and I understand that completely?
It, maybe that or the, um, consulting firm didn't think that that was necessary part of the groundwater test. I mean, inclu, in, in addition to, um, you know, the suite of EPA priority pollutants, herbicides, piccola, percol, right?
Piclorite.
Um, and a suite of radionic acids are also included. Um, in the specific analysis in respect of EPA methods, including in the scope of work are as follows, and it just goes through the organics and semi-volatiles and pesticides.
Okay, so the radionucleides, radium-226, 228 and uranium are also included?
Yep.
Okay. That's good. That's, that's a couple of things that I wanted to touch on. Um, yeah, I, I understand the, uh, the need to, to limit it down due to budget constraints and whatnot. $15,000 is a lot of money to spend on testing and, you know, you don't wanna, you know, you don't wanna go all out. Um, about the testing at the Grand Avenue Beach Access, are, are the public showers on well water?
Mm-hmm.
They are on well water. Okay, and I, I'm getting a lot of, um, requests to recommend testing, uh, soil as well as groundwater. Groundwater is, is good, that's one thing. Maybe in a future round of testing, you could also include soil tests in that as well for the same chemicals.
Well, normally when you test groundwater, it's a sign of the soil pollution, so unless there's something that comes out of that, there would be no reason to test soil.
Yeah, I, I understand. If there's, if there's contaminants found, uh, maybe test the soil for those specific contaminants as well.
Correct.
There are also some contaminants that prefer soil and, and some contaminants that prefer water. Um, the, the fruits and vegetables, that's another thing that I hear a lot about is a lot of people, they grow vegetables, they grow, um, citrus trees in their yards and these, these plants, these vegetables and these fruits, they drink up the groundwater. And it, it would be nice to test some of those, the, the oranges, the star fruit, the, you know, people have tomato gardens and stuff like that, stuff of that nature in their yards. It, it might be nice to add some of that stuff to test as well.
So that would also come after we find something in the groundwater?
Okay.
Because if you don't find anything, and that, that's why you test the groundwater first, so you don't spend a bunch of money on tests that aren't necessary.
Yeah, absolutely. And I just wanna finalize again with thank you guys for doing this. This is a very big step. $15,000 is a lot of money to spend, but I think you guys are spending it well. Thank you.
Appreciate your comment. Mike still open?
Mark, I, I heard what you said and that was the first I had thought along those lines as far as, I'm sorry.
Please state your name.
Zach Sverlock.
Thank you.
Um, just curious, whatever we do find, is there EPA guidelines that say, hey, you're within, you know, some sort of parameters? Because the confusing part was where people were mixing the groundwater versus the drinking water standards and totally freaking out and, you know, I had heard some different things about the levels that are acceptable in Australia and stuff like that and they were like way huge compared to what we found here. And so I think reeling in and letting people understand what is reasonable is amazing and if the EPA doesn't have any guidelines with any of that, then it just continues to be this runaway train, you know? So that was all I was curious. Great, thank you very much.
Yeah, all of, all of the pollutants that we're testing for have, um, an EPA regulatory standard or a health advisory guideline.
For groundwater.
Except, yeah, for groundwater. Except for the PFOS and PFOA and that's the confusion was that's an emergency, an emerging contaminant, so there's not a lot of research yet on that. And they're developing standards on the state level right now for that, for those chemicals. But it's, you know, when you have people who are worried and, and scared, they, they start looking at other areas and then say, oh, wow, they're, it's lower there, you know, maybe it should be lower. So, and that's the normal reaction that, you know, and then a lot of people, if they don't, especially if they rent or something like that and they don't pay a water bill, they don't know where the water comes from. They just don't. And, and that's not uncommon. I mean, and, and I don't wanna make fun of people because that's, that's absolutely a common thing that we see everywhere is people just don't realize...
I'm hearing teachers that are saying, bring bottled water, don't spill it on the ground.
Correct. So it's, it's not an uncommon phenomenon. And, and when you release results like that, everybody's, you know, it's a new, a new contaminant and, and we were expecting the, the reaction. We kinda knew that was gonna come.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Neil Sverlock. Is there a benchmark from prior that you can get reports from? Like that, uh, Air Force would have done, Sea Park area, things that we've known for years, there might be problems. Do we have that? Is that available?
The 1992 report had some, um, testing done and that, and they had, they had the results, so we have those results.
So those are benchmarks?
Yes.
We can see if it's gone up or down.
That's correct.
I know in the environmentals that we have to do from time to time for construction, uh, phase one environmentals, you can have water that literally moves. It can move over, uh, three blocks or four blocks or, you know, these types of things. Will that be a part of the report so that, you know, at a point, somebody who has a problem, um, they, it wasn't a problem that was really there 10 years ago, but it's moved into their area?
Well, I don't know if that analysis will be part of the results report, but you'll see the county and the cities start making those analysis as we get more data and that this is the first step of getting that data.
And are there target areas? What are the target areas?
We have, well, we targeted areas that our residents were concerned about and, and sometimes you target areas because you have access to those areas. You know, we don't have access to private property, so we, most of the targets that we're looking at are public, publicly owned lands. And the county's struggling with that right now. They're actually knocking on doors trying to get access to people's private wells. Um, so that's a challenge and, and that's, um, we're, we're targeting areas where our residents are concerned that in the, in the South Patrick Shores area, the county's targeting areas that looked as though it could have been a military, um, dump site, things like that.
Ages ago.
Yes. And so they're looking at those specifically.
And how do police tests go? Any idea?
It depends on the well itself. So our wells, we constructed them, um, as monitoring wells, so they're anywhere from, there's a screen at two feet and they go down to about nine and a half. Um, and we did that very specifically so we could have shallow well testing to, to make sure that we can get a read on the soil.
Okay, and where's the water table at that point?
The water table's about two feet deep, especially over here near City Hall. It's a little higher over, um, by Jackson Avenue.
And are public, uh, reports available for Lake Washington? Because that's what, that's our drinking water. And if there's nothing, if there's no problem there...
That's, that's, that's another concern that our residents are coming through right now. So we, we were, we actually used some, um, of the efforts of the, of the Aaron Brockovich team to see if they could give us some insight on that and so we're working through that right now.
Well, if we can make those types of reports available, uh, just sign them.
Yep, they're all public record and as they become available, they're at City Hall.
Or if somebody else can put them all together and make it for the simple, us simple people, you know, or we simple people.
Well, to that point, and I just wanna let you know, we just discussed today about reorganizing our website and actually putting a page of all this information on there because we have a lot of information on there that we just could keep adding. And I think if you're new to the situation, you're looking for something specific, you wouldn't even know where to start. So we're trying to categorize it into some organization at this point. So we should have that done, hopefully by maybe the end of the week.
Okay, thank you. Um, any more citizens? John?
John Fergus, 135 Maple. Last night at the RAB, um, it became very clear that on the perfluorides, they don't have a regulatory standard because they don't know where to sit. They don't even know what the normal background is. And so our testing, just for that stuff, begins to set an idea of what an urban background might be. I understand from last night, the county's gonna do some testing in Vieira and to see maybe that should be, it certainly isn't close to any base. So, uh, you know, there's other purposes for this data. Back in the 60s, we did a little bit of sampling, as I recall, for arsenic and a couple of other, uh, contaminants for concern for stormwater runoff. Uh, I'm not sure if I have any of the results that made it through.
Did you see the 60s?
Around City Hall somewhere.
For the 90s.
In the 90s.
Oh, the 90s, okay. I thought you said the 60s.
Yeah, one point, I think it was the 90s. Uh, there was some contention about whether we had a stormwater problem or not. The fact that you're going for the EPA priority, uh, that's about as good as you can do without starting to waste money on silly things. Uh, and, uh, that, uh, I would suggest if it's not on there, since they're really inexpensive to do nitrogen phosphorus, if you have any concerns about the lagoon, just add that. This is four more data points. Alan and I've taken some data in the past, uh, which was a bit crude, so you'd have a couple more data points there. The other thing is that my suspicion is that you are going to find some elevated metals such as arsenic. It's natural in Florida soils to be above the EPA standards. And also, as I recall from some of the testing, uh, we were informed that this tends to leach out of pressure, the old pressure-treated wood. out of pressure, the old pressure-treated wood. And so everybody that put up a pressure-treated wood fence contributed to whatever's there. And I understand now they're not using arsenic. But somebody, I would suggest, before you just throw this data out, that somebody that understands the different contaminants, take a look at it and give you an idea. If there's elevated arsenic, then maybe it's this, maybe it's that, it's natural, it's not natural. Copper's another one that tends to show up in the open water because of all the antifouling paint that's used on boats.
John, thank you.
Let me just comment on that real quick. The county is doing this nitrogen and phosphorus sampling, and they're using our wells too. So I didn't want to mix those because they, they're paying for that. They don't want to pay for that.
Yeah, most of that's all.
And then the, what else was it that I was... Oh, arsenic. I just wanted to comment on that real quick, too. Arsenic occurs naturally in Florida sand, up to 37 parts per billion. So if you see the nonsense going around on Facebook right now about the city's beach, it's not the city's beach re-nourishment, the county's beach re-nourishment, and the city testing that sand, and you see that there's higher arsenic levels than the residential standard, almost everything in Florida is higher than the residential standard for arsenic. So that's completely natural to have higher than residential levels of arsenic in sand. So I just wanted to make sure everybody knows that, when you see that come through Facebook. So that there was nothing wrong with the sand that we were putting on the beach. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir?
Yeah, my name is Mike Nair. I live in Maricota. I'm a class of 1968 SHS graduate. We're having our reunion this weekend. So I've lived here a long time, too. I'm also a consulting hydrogeologist. I primarily do underground injection control wells, like up in Cocoa Beach or Melbourne or Rockledge and those. We have a lot of issues with arsenic. Because when we inject water down to store it, somehow or other, the arsenic comes out of the woodwork. And so we're always out of compliance. I only had a few questions. I mean, if you're going to spend $15,000... I worked with Jim Langenbach and they're up on the Space Center a little bit back about 10 or 12 years ago, where we were looking at the superficial opfer, and we call it superficial opfer system. We're fortunate in this area that the superficial opfer is usually only about 40, 50, 60 feet thick, and it's pretty homogeneous. I mean, it's mostly sand and shell. As you move up towards Cocoa Beach, you, things that starts to thin, the confining beds come up, the superficial's not as thick, and you run into all kinds of other problems. If you're in Rockledge, the confined opfer where we get our water from, by the way, I built the Lake Washington well field, so back in 1990. We did all the permitting and all of that stuff, and we never sampled for PFOAs. We sampled for volatile organic compounds, which was still standard back then. And I think you, I have, I looked at the list the gentleman had there, and just, I looked at it and I saw a lot of volatiles on there and a bunch of other pesticide, which is good, and you should be testing for that. But my only, and I came, I talked to Mindy about this, and if you're going to spend, I mean, $15,000 for groundwater contamination problems and subsequent cleanup, that's nothing. That's a drop in the bucket. I mean, you're spending $15,000, I mean, they're spending hundreds of thousands of dollars up at the Space Center. You know, and I don't know what, they've been working on Patrick out there since the 80s. So I don't know what they've spent out there, but those people have deep pockets. Satellite Beach really doesn't have deep pockets. I mean, you know, give me a break. I live here.
Yeah, turn it off.
But, so my only, I mean, good, you can spend the money, you can test the wells, you can look for PFOAs, you can, you've got a whole list of volatiles on there. I would only, I would caution you because they are going to have another consultant eventually that's going to oversee this whole thing. And when they, when they come in here and they're going to do a lot like they did at the Space Center, probably, if they have the money. And I don't know about Aaron Brockovich and that group, but I just know that when you get environmental people, activists, like, I'm not saying she's an activist, but when you get people like that involved, it just, it tends to get the public, you know, I mean, they're concerned, everybody's concerned, my God, you know, cancer clusters, that type But it just drives the cost of everything up. So if you can just keep the technical people, let the state of Florida, let the county, and coordinate with them. And as far as your, I mean, your well drilling and all that, I don't know. I think I saw your well drillers, Tetra Tech or something like that. We, when we drill wells, when we drill, like I did exploratory wells up in Cocoa Beach and in Rockledge, and we use the direct push technology, where we take a continuous sample all the way down, water sample and soil samples, and sometimes the depths can reach, you know, 200 feet. But this gives, this gives us an idea where you're ultimately going with this is probably some, is going to be a regional groundwater model. And I've worked on those models before, not so much for the superficial, we just always, in my line of work, because it's mostly water resources, we always kind of ignore the superficial when we go down to where the water is. And we would model down in there, and I don't, we never had an issue with PFOA or PFOS or whatever. And I'm not an expert on any of that. But I would caution you, when you drill new wells and you take samples, because you're not dealing with a one-dimensional problem, you're dealing in three dimensions. And the opfer, you know, I don't know how thick it is here. I know in a lot of areas, it's not homogeneous. And if they're, ultimately where they're going is they're going to, they're going to conduct groundwater models, flow and transport. And that's a whole specialty unto itself. And they have to calibrate these models by various methods. Pressure drives everything. Your water table opfer essentially is controlled by the topography of land. The water's going from higher to lower elevations. It's going to the ponds, it's going to canals. Most of it is going to the river. Believe it or not, A1A up here is the groundwater divide, and most of the water from A1A this direction is going towards the river, not towards the ocean. So your risk, fortunately for me, because I don't go in the river anymore, but I would go in the ocean because I don't think it's really been contaminated. But as far as the river goes, if you've got PFOAs in your water table opfer, you got an error. And when you, they manifest themselves in living organisms, which means if you eat the fish out of the river, you're eating...
Exactly.
That. So, and it just builds your system. And I have a limited knowledge of the fluorinated compounds, but I would just caution you on taking, I mean, from a money standpoint, to try to work, before you jump into taking a bunch of samples and putting a bunch of sample points in, because you're going, if you want to help, and you want to help ultimately with what they're trying to get to, which is going to be these models.
Yep.
And finding, oh, another problem, finding your point sources. Everybody points at Patrick Air Force Base or the Space Center. Go down here and drill some wells at the fire station. You know, you've got plenty of PFOAs, the stuff that's going to generate there, gas stations, I mean, any number of places that you're probably going to find it in the water table. So I would, I would get with whoever they're going, the engineer is going to be, it's not going to be me, I guarantee that. And make sure that they get the proper sample depths in for your samples, and then limit your testing to what you just have to have. In other words, so they can use it. And your water levels are things you each be looking at, you know, surveying in wells, getting proper NGBD, foot, you know, how far above land surface is your well you're measuring for. That's just simple information, and it's not that expensive to calculate. I mean, city staff, you know, could do that, and you could hire a surveyor and save a lot of money.
Mike?
But you're going to spend a lot of money on doing water quality analysis.
Right.
Thank you. Okay, appreciate it.
I just, I asked Mike to come, that's why he spoke a little bit longer. He's been, he had emailed me, and he's very informative. And he made a very good point when he did email me, you know, is how, like he said, what we're doing is so important with all the samples that we're collecting, and if they're sampling... Can you guys hear me okay? Because I was having a hard time. So we want to see how this flows through the island, because we have a very interesting area with the sand and the coral, and I call it coral, I'm old school. So it's going to be very interesting to see in the future how this chemical moves through different areas, because they can take that, and you can take it throughout the country or the world. And, you know, this is all over the world, it's in Australia, it's everywhere. So we're kind of, I feel like we're setting some pretty good standards, like what Dan said, is like, we're kind of being groundbreaking a little bit in what we're doing, and I think we're going to help the bigger picture ultimately. And so he made a really good point to that, to me, which is something I hadn't thought of. So I asked him to come. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, for citizens still, please.
I'm Rob Twitty. I live at 259 Jackson Avenue, kind of across from the high school. First, I just want to thank everyone for, you've put a lot of time into this, you've done a lot of study, and I know you'd much rather be doing other things and be able to complete your walk without all the interruptions. But again, thank you very much for your hard work, and it's really appreciated. I was going to say, I do hope you can support the testing here for about 15 grand. It seems pretty detailed, and the results may be pretty good coming back, and we take a lot of pressure off of you guys. And because at that point, in my opinion, you've done, really gone a bit out of your way to show concern for the community, for the water supply. And I think it would go very well with the community, and hopefully get this thing out of this environment.
Yes.
And where, some places where it needs to be a little bit above your pay grade.
Way above.
Yeah, way above. And the resolution you did was very good that you sent forward, by the way. I had a deep water well that I shared with my neighbor on Jackson Avenue, and got some breaks in it, had to do a new well. And I chose to do another deep one. My neighbor chose to do a 12-foot one. And again, it's right across from the high school. I've gotten that neighbor's approval. If anyone cares to test it, you can. I've been working with Nick on it in your environmental office, and so he's been considering it and working with you guys. I just thought we mentioned that. It may be a little deeper than what you're looking for. I heard you talking about two feet.
Yeah, that's why we left it off. Because we had you on there, and then we decided against it, yeah.
All right. I just gathered that in my reading, so, anyway. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rob.
Appreciate it very much.
Thank you for...
Thank you.
Thank you for contacting us and offering that, though. We appreciate your input.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Okay, citizens of Satellite Beach still open? Okay? Hearing no further citizens of Satellite Beach, I'll open up for any citizen who'd like to Hearing none?
My name is Erin Hegges. I'm from South Patrick Shores. And I was at the RAB meeting last night, and I wanted to let you guys know that I'm really, really grateful for the questions that you asked, because, as you know, I was a little skeptical at first, and the questions that you posed to the board really, like, let me feel confident that you are listening, and thank you for that. And thank you, too, for being there as well. I just have a little bit of, hopefully constructive criticism. Mr. Montanaro, it would be so great if we knew a little bit more about some of the things that you spoke to with Mrs. Mayfield and Mr. Altman, because I know that you were talking about these topics. So it's really interesting to hear that you did take it to the next level, but just to hear that you had the conversation doesn't really give us much. So I don't know if there's an opportunity for you to embellish on that at some later time in some other fashion, but like, you know, like something like minutes or something, like just bullet points of, so that we know, because like, for instance, only because I was there last night, did I get detail. So being part of it is where you get the details.
Thank you. I appreciate that. This is on groundwater, so...
Yes, but this was...
No, this, please, I, I'm going to stick to this agenda item, which is groundwater. So your input's very important. If you would, I know you can get with Councilman Montanaro, and he'll get you information, but this is not...
I apologize.
No, it's fine. I mean, people like to come up, but it's groundwater.
No, no, it was, I apologize. I assumed that you were talking about the groundwater, because this is what we were all, the RAB and everything was last night. Also, another comment is for Mr. Breimer. I know that you're opposed to spending this money for the groundwater, and that is really discouraging to hear, because you, of all people on the council, have an interest in the health industry. And so I would just encourage you to maybe think about, there's plenty of us out here that are concerned with the groundwater, and that just nipping this in the bud and getting these test results would just bring peace of mind, and it brings more to the next RAB meeting. So I just want to thank you for your time.
Thank you. Non-citizens, comment portion? Hearing none? Let me, I'll close the comment portion. Back to City Council.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the city manager to approve the scope of services with Applied Ecology to conduct groundwater testing at various locations throughout the city for contaminants, I can't even say this all one, but, and approve a budget for up to $15,000.
Second. Motion by Councilman Gibson, a second by Vice Mayor Montanaro. Further discussion from council?
I want to address a couple of things. You know, I look at this, and Mr. Spurlock, you brought up, you know, baseline readings. I think what we're doing here by looking at these tests, if nothing else, that's kind of what we're doing, is to develop whatever the baseline is for all of these items that are on this list for the city. As far as the comments about what I...
My asthma kicked in on you. Get away from me.
Okay, speaking with Senator Mayfield and Representative Altman, basically all we talked about was just the fact that this is going on. Senator Altman has been involved, and so has, or Representative Altman and Senator Mayfield have both been involved to understand what's going on. And what we're looking for is, you know, with additional funding, the state can kick in on whatever, when we get to the point where we start finding some things that we may find or we may not find. So we're more or less talking to them about how important this is going down the road, is what we're looking at. And Mark Ryan, who's the manager of Indian Harbor Beach, was there this morning, and he's basically articulating the same thing. Once we get the results from these tests, we're going to be looking to the state or federal government and the county to start navigating how we're going to address all this stuff. So that's really what we're talking about. They're well aware of these issues, but there are no specifics.
Thank you. That's encouraging.
Mark?
Just one thing to your comments. Yes, I'm in healthcare, and one of the questions I get at least once a day is from a physician. At what point are you guys going to stop doing this? You're not finding anything, there's no cancer cluster, drinking water's fine, what are you going to continue to look for? And then the bigger question they get is, Mark, what are you going to do with it when you find it? It still has to go to a higher level than us. And everybody's testing around, and in the next level of testing, they find more stuff. Again, is it tied to any healthcare problems? We don't know. But just to randomly go out and test is not sitting well with, I know with the Health Department, I know with Tallahassee, because I deal with them on a regular basis, we're just testing, but we don't know where we're going with this, and that's not how it works. You define a healthcare issue, and then you get the data to support if that healthcare issue is an issue. But you don't just go think, find, dig in wells and say, oh, I guess we're going to have to apply it to a healthcare issue. It doesn't... It doesn't work that way. You have to go on the science. Right now, we're just digging wells, which is okay. It's just not something I wanna support because of the healthcare pushback that I get on a daily basis is, why don't you guys stop and get the EPA involved if they need to be involved? Is the CDC involved? No, they're not involved. They've issued no healthcare advisories. That's what I'm saying. I think we're doing the right thing, but we're way ahead of ourselves. I think we need to step back, let some other people take a look at this issue and then get re-engaged in this.
Whoa, whoa, excuse me. No. Sorry, that's okay, dear. Please, if you would, talk to Courtney on that. I appreciate it.
I'm a big part of the support.
Oh, well, I wouldn't, no. Okay. Any further comment from council at this point?
Let's just do it.
Okay. First, to the staff, everyone, thank you. Thank you, the audience, for being professional. Thank you, guys, for coming out. Appreciate it very much. Appreciate all your input to this. Lenore?
Councilman Breimer?
No.
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Montanaro?
Yes.
Councilman Gibson?
Yes.
Eric Dino?
Yes. Okay. Council, we've been going at it for a while. Does anybody need a break?
Yeah.
Okay. We need to take a recess for five minutes and we'll be back picking up the agenda where we left off. Okay.
I do.
Great convenor in the meeting. We'll move to Agenda Eight, discuss, take action on the Civic Center renovation change order.
Mayor, I'm sorry, I forgot to tell you during the break, but we would like to withdraw this because we don't need to send it to the council.
Thank you.
The CRA took care of that.
Appreciate it. Okay. Great. Moving along here. At this time, moving on to Agenda Number Nine, I'd like to open up a public hearing on Ordinance eleven sixty-seven. Jim?
Ordinance number eleven sixty-seven, an ordinance of the city of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, disbanding the Community Redevelopment Agency Advisory Board, amending the city board's handbook created by ordinance number eleven oh one, as amended by ordinance number eleven thirty-seven, ordinance number eleven thirty-eight, and ordinance number eleven fifty-two, creating a mission statement for and amending the duties and date and time of meetings of the beautification board, removing all provisions related to the Community Redevelopment Agency Advisory Board, changing the dates and time of meetings for the recreation board, changing the dates and time of meetings of the Sampson Island Working Board and providing authority to substitute workdays for regular meetings of that board, providing for severability and providing an effective date. That's the second reading of ordinance number eleven sixty-seven.
Thank you. Have a motion?
I have a motion to approve ordinance number eleven sixty-seven on second reading.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Montanaro, second by Councilman Breimer. Further discussion? At this time, open up Agenda Item Nine for public comment.
John Ferguson, thirty-five, Maple. Courtney, your comment just prompted a thought in my mind.
Uh-oh.
About the CRA taking care of the problem. It's the advisory board that you're dissolving and I don't know whether that has relevance or not, but after my in-law's death, my wife was the executor, we did everything we had to do with the estate. She closed out the account. And then she started receiving checks from the state made out to her father. She can't cash them because she closed out the account and she can't open it because she was a co-owner with her father. And I'm just asking, since you're still doing projects and they do change orders and things, is there a problem if the advisory board disappears or do you need to wait until it's done? I'm just raising it as a question, that's all.
I mean, it's only an advisory board and we are the CRA.
We're the agency.
Yeah, we're the agency. Any further public comment on Agenda Item? Hearing none? Back to council. Any further? Lenore?
Councilman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Councilman Breimer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Montanaro?
Yes.
Eric Dino?
Yes, motion passes. We did ten, moving on to eleven. Basically, we're done, that's Agenda Items for our next regular meeting. Again, I think at that meeting, remember, we're gonna swear in a new fire chief if he's still around.
We just want him to survive this weekend.
So, please take a look over it. Is there anything else that needs to be added? Please let us know. Moving on to Agenda Number Twelve, appointments to boards. Okay.
I'll make a motion to appoint Jane Van Cleve to the beautification board as a primary member. And I would like to make a motion to appoint John Gutmacher to the recreation board as a primary member.
I have a motion by Councilman Montanaro, second by Council, excuse me, Vice Mayor Montanaro, second by Councilman Breimer.
Yes.
Further discussion?
Is there any question on whether or not we would wanna maybe put her on the firefighter or police pension?
At this point, I, I have another reason, not yes or no, but, I, here's the reason I might as well say, we have a lot of good members on the CRA board. So I wanna make sure that we give them an opportunity to come back in at some place. And maybe such as, Mike Chase has been really good, he put in for board of adjustments and he also served on the pension board. So do we wanna steer Mike more towards the pension board because that's an important board where we need that vote there? So I'm not sure, Lenore, have you heard back from everybody who?
I've only had him come back to me on application.
I would like to make sure, maybe we reach out again to them?
Sure.
Just to make sure, because that was a board that worked for a lot of Dave Omler and so forth, there's a lot of people on it. And then if not, then let's come back and do it. That's my feeling.
Yeah, because there's actually two seats open. There's one on police and fire and one on general employees. So there's, there's, there's two.
We have some openings here. The rec board definitely needs one. They're down. So explain to me, they need that for the whole meeting, so.
And if I'm not mistaken, Donnie was on both of these boards.
Yes.
So he was the city appointee for both of these. So these, this, these two seats are not the police or fires or the general employees picking the seat, it's the council.
Right. Okay.
And you can pick the same one.
You can pick, we can have the same person on both of them.
Right. Okay. Sounds good. Any further? Lenore?
Councilman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Councilman Breimer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Montanaro?
Yes.
Eric Dino?
Yes, motion passes. So to council, if you would, take a look at the vacancies on this board and also, Lenore, if you could let them know about, hold on, let me finish. These CRA people who wanna be on boards, let's try to start filling up these boards by people we might know in the community and get them out on.
Okay. Mayor, I have one question. It shows that the library board, does it say we still have one primary member opening?
Yes, Lucia Watson.
Because we had two alternates. Are they all, have they all been moved up now?
Well, we had that Laura Hayes, I mean, who was, that we didn't put on because.
Been appointed yet, so that's.
So if that's still open, we could appoint her, correct?
Well, that's why, so, well, I'm assuming that the, both alternates should be, should have moved up by now if I'm not mistaken.
I have a bad memory of this kind of stuff.
Before we do it, then, Lenore, will you find out about that for us?
For the next meeting.
For the next meeting. And then we can.
You have the attendance record there, but I can reach out to them.
Yeah, reach out and just see what they've done.
Okay.
If they moved them up, those people have moved up or we have to move them up.
I think you have to move them up.
I think.
You have to move them.
Okay, well, then, then the next meeting, let's see where we sit with those.
You, you have one alternate who has a term expiring August fifteenth next year and another alternate who has a term expiring June of next year.
So my point is, somebody needs to be moved up or they don't have to be moved up, if they still want to be alternates, then we can appoint somebody else. So I think we need to ask them, do they, are they ready to be moved up?
That makes sense. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Any other on, okay, thank you. At this time, move on to Agenda Item Thirteen, approval of minutes.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from the September fifth regular meeting and from the September nineteenth regular meeting as submitted.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Montanaro.
Second.
Second by Councilman Gibson. Any further discussion?
No.
Hearing none, Lenore?
Councilman Breimer?
Yes.
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Councilman Gibson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Montanaro?
Yes.